Marin RV Park. I know there'll be a council member's report on what's going on with the negotiations, I hope, but there was one thing that struck me today. Since your last meeting, we got a notice of a rent increase for June. And it got me to thinking, this year, January 1st, my social security check went up $20 because of the COLA of 1.6 percent. My rent for June will go up $75, which is an 8.7 percent increase. As the gentleman just stated, this is your low-income housing stock, and at that rate, it won't be low-income for more than a few more years.
Okay, thanks very much. Anyone else like to make a comment? Please come up.
My name is Julie Elekta. Can you hear me? If I got the mic in the right place? Thanks. My address is 71 Camellia Circle. I live in the terraces area of the Rose Lane development. And tonight, I would like to briefly address the library parcel, 2.4 something acres that I understand was donated to the city and designated by the city in 2013 as the site for the new library. I'll be very quick. I would like to raise tonight two points. One is the importance of community input on the library parcel and the desirability of avoiding community surprise. As a Rose Lane resident, with the library parcel literally in my front yard, I was surprised to learn that the city is now considering the development of housing on the parcel. My understanding when I purchased my Rose Lane property was that the master plan designated that space exclusively for the library use and for a community area related to the library. Apparently, the city's thinking has changed, and you've -- the city has now issued an RFQ preceded by an RFP, and I've read both of the documents very carefully, that contemplates and may even invite a mixed-use development of the area. Now, from my perspective personally, adding some housing may be good, and it may make the library project more economically feasible, and I'm not here tonight to talk about the merits either way. What I am concerned about is this feeling of surprise. I don't like the idea that things are happening, that plans were being made back in August and September, and nobody was talking about it. It was done kind of quietly. There was not good public input solicited, and there was not good public thinking contributed. It appears that the new vision was conceived and acted upon without any consultation with my Rose Lane neighbors and residents. And we're the people who actually live there, and it's our streets that are going to be impacted by this development. So I think our views need to be part of the process. I don't want my community, and I don't want my council, you gentlemen and our mayor, to be embarrassed by the very non-transparent process that occurred in Corte Madera with the windship project. And that's, by the way, where I lived before I moved here, not the windship, but Corte Madera. So I really want to urge you not to learn from that lesson and to be more open, not to follow a non-transparent path. The development of the library site is very important, central to our town, and I think greater dialogue would make for a better project. Everyone would be happier, the process would go more smoothly, and it would be more efficient and economical in the end. So I'm sure you are following all the proper procedures about disclosure and soliciting our input, and I understand that it is our duty to come to you, not necessarily your duty to come to us. But I urge you to be as good as you can be about opening the paths. And I see some nodding, so I think you agree with me. Go beyond the minimum here in seeking our input. Go beyond the minimum in getting our views early in the planning department. I understand you've already gotten some developer bids in, in response to the RFQ, which solicited some information about mixed use of the parcel. I'd love it if you made that information public.
So not to interrupt, but we really appreciate your comments, and perhaps our city manager may address where we are in the process.
Yeah, it sounds like there's some misunderstanding on the part of the speaker, and it's consistent with emails I've been receiving from other residents of Rose Lane. The city has not solicited or received any bids for any projects on that property. What the city's done is invited the development community to offer visions of what might happen on the property. If the council were to find any of those vision statements to be interesting, the council could then propose that a very extensive public process occur to discuss whether any of those visions should then materialize in an actual project. Under the California law, you would have to take the process not only through a general visioning process, but eventually through the environmental review process and the planning process. So we could anticipate that if the council were to find any one of these proposals to be interesting, one to two years of rather lengthy, extensive outreach and public process. But right now, since the council only asked the development community if there were any ideas worth exploring, there's nothing to do outreach for because they haven't actually seen yet whether the development community thinks anything is viable to do on the property.
Thank you, thank you, Dan. That's really helpful. And actually, what you say makes sense to me because there is a lot of misunderstanding, and people are worried. And so the more we can communicate this, the better. The RFQ seems to go quite a long way, even suggesting what the city is interested in. So that's where I think we get confused. The more dialogue we have, the more transparency we have, the happier I am.
And I think we all agree about the importance of dialogue and transparency.
I will make sure that a link goes back up on the website. I encourage residents, rather than to speculate, to actually watch the council's multiple discussions on this topic, which I think are very clear about the council's intent and what the future public process might look like.
And I think that's right. But it's important for the public to be mindful of what's going on and participate in what are going to create opportunities for that. So we really appreciate your comments tonight.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public would like to speak? Please come up to the podium.
Thank you, and good evening, Vice Mayor Haroff, members of the city council, city manager Schwartz, Neil Toth. My name is Heidi Scobal. I am my partner, Chris Wheaton, our residence at 53 Rose Lane. I do really appreciate the comments that Mr. Schwartz identified tonight. And I also wanted to come up here to thank the city council, city staff, and the Library Foundation for trying to move forward a process and a project that can actually be funded and constructed. I think everybody sees that vacant parcel, and we want to see it developed. We really do appreciate the efforts. I too am here this evening to identify or state my concerns regarding the perception of a lack of transparency. So again, thank you for that information. I think it would be really helpful if the council could agendize a discussion item regarding that parcel and just provide a history of the project site, the clasp, what entitlements have been approved, what the city might be considering, what type of regulatory processes would need to be pursued, whether it's just with the construction of a library or housing. Identify what type of environmental constraints could be associated with that parcel. Also identify what kind of statutory exemptions there could be related to the construction of housing. There's just so much talk about conspiracy about what could happen, and I really do think for full transparency, you know, I don't want to add additional work for staff, but I think having, you know, a 15, 20-minute item on the agenda just to identify what the city's done to date, to show all the good work that you've done, and to ensure transparency through a public process.
Mr. Mayor, I'm assured that by the end of your meeting, there'll be links to the multiple presentations that speak to the request of the speaker. The council has heard numerous presentations that speak exactly to what the speaker's requesting. And so they're up on YouTube, and we'll be happy to make them available.
That's right, but not everyone necessarily has been able to access them in the past or something like that. So we'll take your points under consideration. So thanks very much.
Great, thank you for your consideration.
Of course. Anyone else from the public who would like to make a comment? With that, we'll close the public comment period, go on to agenda item number three, which is presentations and proclamations, of which there are none. Agenda item number four is approval of the consent calendar, and unless there is a member of the council who would like to pull one of the agenda items off for approval, we'll open it to the public and ask the same question there. Anyone from the council? Any member of the public who would like to request an item on the consent calendar to be taken off the consent calendar and considered otherwise? Seeing no one, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. So the motion's approved. And with that, we'll go to agenda item number five, which is the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you for that clarification.
Only a few items for you this evening. First, I wanted to let the council know that we've completed a hiring process for a new head of our NRG program, our NRG coordinator, and we'll be introducing her to you and the public at an upcoming meeting. And also wanted to let the council know that we're certainly fascinated to wait and see what happens with Measure C. It'll be several weeks before we'll know if it passed, but rest assured, regardless of whether it passes, we're working diligently on wildfire protection planning for our community. And I want to thank our Central Marin Fire, they've been working on contingency plans for any budget scenario that materializes. So I want to -- we've had a lot of folks asking what happens if it doesn't pass. We'll still be here if it doesn't pass during wildfire protection. That's why I wanted to bring that up.
I think it's really important that you stress that because no matter what happens, we're still --
Now, if it passes, we'll be doing all kinds of really great things, too.
Right. But we're still here for the community.
And then I just wanted to let the council know, as I think the council members are aware, let the council and the public know, when this deadline hit for bills to submit in the legislature, the number was staggering. I think it was record-breaking. And not surprisingly, and you may discuss this some with Mr. Toth during the general plan update, a lot of emphasis on housing. So we're sifting through them early on in the stages of the legislation year, legislating -- you'll see that these are intent bills, and the actual language will be coming. So we've had some folks asking, have you seen this bill? Have you seen that bill? We are taking that to heart, putting them on a list, but we, right now, think it's a little premature for bringing anything to the council. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, that's great. Any comments from the council in response to the report of the city manager? If not, we'll go to council members' oral reports, item number six on the agenda. Are there any members of the council that have something they'd like to bring to the attention of the public? Okay. Anyone? Mr. Hillmer?
No, thank you.
So I don't have one either, so we're going to move right through that. Agenda item number seven, public hearings. We don't have any, so we're going to go directly to agenda item number eight. There are three items, business items, that we need to address. And let's get started with the 8.1, which is a discussion of our fiscal year 2018 audit.
I'm going to invite Administrative Services Director Kathy Orm up to introduce our auditor. The council probably realizes after seeing the audit that it's changed, and that's a new format because we have a new auditor, and I'm going to let Kathy do the introduction.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor and council members, tonight we have a presentation, a very short one, from Ahmed Badawi. I know I've already butchered his name several times, to go over our year-end financials of 6/30/19. And I will turn this over to Ahmed.
Thank you. We're very glad to have you here tonight.
Good evening. My name is Ahmed Badawi, and I am a partner with Badawi and Associates. I was the audit partner on the city audit, and I'll present to you the results of the fiscal year 19. Just trying to get organized here. So if you don't mind, I'm going to use my paper because I can't really see the slides. But at the end, thank you for inviting me today. So today, what I'm going to present to you are who were the engagement teams, what were our deliverables and the scope of our audit, what types of audit opinion we issued, the areas we emphasized during our audit process, provide you some of the required communication in your financials as your independent auditor, and then see if you have any questions. So starting on slide number four, the composition of the -- thank you. Composition of the engagement team. So I was the engagement partner, so I am the person ultimately responsible for planning, designing the audit procedures, and finally making sure that we adhere to that plan. We always have a quality control reviewer, so this person is in the background normally reviewing our work, making sure that we adhere to professional standards. We have an access to an IT specialist in case we needed more expert evaluation of the city's computer system and the controls embedded there. Then we had three professional auditors, a senior auditor, and two professional staff assigned. In terms of our deliverables, so we were mainly engaged to report on the city's basic financial statements, provide an opinion on whether it's fairly stated or not. Because the city is subject to government auditing standards, we also issue an opinion on our consideration of internal control over financial reporting. This year, the city was also subject to a compliance audit, what we refer to as a single audit. That is the audit of the federal grants, just because you had a large grant for the bridge project, so we conducted that audit as well. We perform an agreed-upon procedures on your appropriation limit, the GAN limit, and then finally, the communication with the governing body, which is what I'm doing today. In terms of areas of primary audit emphasis, we had three main areas. Those are pretty standard areas in almost every audit that we do, so there was nothing really very unique for the city of Larkspur. The first one is management overriding controls. So that is by default a risk that exists in any audit. Management are responsible for designing controls and putting them in place and monitoring them, and if they decide at some point to override them, they probably will be able to do so. So we have to design our audit procedures to mitigate that risk or at least minimize it. So we develop our audit procedures with an element of unpredictability, so not the same procedures every year, same accounts every year. We test journal entries prepared by management. We review management estimates for any clear bias. We make sure that accounting principles have been consistently applied. We make sure that we also assign more experienced staff to more complex areas, and a variety of other procedures that we perform. The second area of focus was revenue recognition, and again, that's another area by default is of a higher risk. People by nature, they tend to like to have more revenues and less expenses. So we're not saying that Larkspur tend to do that, but it's just in any audit, we have to consider that to be an area of a higher risk. So we rely a lot on third-party confirmations. So we confirm with the county, we ask them to let us know how much was provided or was paid to the city during the year. We reconcile that to the city's accounting records, make sure that we know why they're different. They're always different because of a variety of reasons, but minor differences, and as long as we're able to account for those differences, that's fine. But we rely a lot on third-party confirmations, but we also do testing of licenses and permits and fee revenues and so on. And then finally, the pension and OPEB areas. Those are areas by nature, they have required complex accounting. The dollar amounts are significant, so we consider it to be an area of a higher risk. We communicate directly with the pension plan, with the auditors of the pension plan. We test information submitted by the city to the pension plan. We review the actuarial assumptions and so on. So those were the areas of main emphasis during our audit process. In terms of our auditor's report, we have issued an unmodified opinion, so that's in simple terms, it's a clean opinion. And the opinions state the standards that we followed, the generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. An unmodified opinion means that we believe that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, that all estimates are reasonable, that all disclosures are properly reflected in the financials, and that accounting principles have been consistently applied. Just wanted to also, can I give you a 30,000-foot view of the numbers in your financial statements? Again, this is taking a look at all city funds using full accrual basis accounting, so it's not just focusing on one fund, like a general fund. So on slide number 10, you will see the composition of the city's assets over the last three years. And the two accounts that I would highlight that had significant fluctuations would be your cash and investments and your capital assets. And the city had debt issuance during fiscal year 19, so that is the money that was issued from bonds and have not been spent yet. That has caused that increase in cash. And also the capital projects, that you do have a lot of construction, a lot of work happening on the bridge project, so basically that is a result of that. But other than that, everything else is, seems to be fairly consistent. It is pretty typical for almost all cities that we audit, that your two largest assets are the cash and investments and the capital assets, and that is consistent with everybody else that we see. In terms of liabilities, so I mentioned that there was a new debt issuance during the fiscal year, so you can see down the long-term liabilities, it went up from 2.6 million to 28 million, so that's obviously the result of issuing that bond. Your second largest liability is your net pension liability, and then your OPEB, which is retiree medical benefits. And those have remained fairly consistent over the last couple of years at least. So just showing you that information. And then on the next slide is focusing on the city's net position or the city's equity. Just taking your assets minus liabilities. And we divide equity into three main categories. The first one is a net investment in capital assets. This amount is not in a spendable form and most likely will never become in a spendable form. This is how much the city invested in streets and roads and sidewalks and buildings and other assets, so it will most likely not be converted to cash anytime soon. The restricted amounts, those are amounts that have legal restrictions on them, so they can only be used for a specified purpose. The big increase is the result of the bond proceeds that haven't been spent yet, but those are not under the council control. They have to be spent in accordance with the legal requirements. And then finally, the unrestricted amounts, that is the amount that is under the council control. There is a deficit, 17.5 million. Obviously, a deficit is a surprising number to -- I don't want to say surprising number, but it obviously is a number that requires clarification. That is mainly the result of recording your unfunded pension and OPEB liabilities. Those are liabilities that have, were not required to be recorded in the past, and I think starting in 2015, you were required to start reporting those. So that basically caused that deficit. Obviously, these are very long-term liabilities, so, but that's the reason for the deficit. But looking at financial results, revenues over expenses, obviously, this year, you can see that it is almost 14 and a half million, and there's a reason for that. There were a big part of that are grant revenues, reimbursement for, again, the bridge project. So those are one-time revenues, and this number is going to obviously be a little different in the future. So that's relating to that. And another ratio that we normally like to provide to the governing body are the net cost of service to tax revenues. So the net cost of service is the cost of running all city departments and city functions and services minus any revenues that those departments or services are able to bring in on their own. So for example, fees from users or grants to fund their program, and the idea is to see how dependent are you on tax revenues, and obviously, all cities are dependent on tax revenues, but also the question is whether your tax revenues are sufficient to cover that net cost of service. So you'll see that your tax revenues have been consistently higher than the net cost of service. In fiscal year 19, they are significantly higher, just because there is about $8, $9 million in grant revenues in that fiscal year 19. That's a one-time revenue. So that is making that variance significant for fiscal year 19. If we were to just focus on the general fund, so this is how your general fund looked like, and what I'm trying to display here is the city's unrestricted fund balance, the fund balance that is under your control, that have no legal restriction, and compare that to annual expenditures. The idea is to see, in the very unlikely scenario that all your revenue sources stop coming in, how long can the city continue to pay its bills? And we determined that you probably can continue to pay bills for about 10 months. So that is a healthy fund balance. Anytime you go below two months, it becomes obviously a red flag and a concern about the city's ability to pay its bills timely. So 10 months is a, I mean, no comment. It's not the highest we've seen, but definitely above average, so it's a healthy fund balance to have. If we were to focus on pension? Yes, sir?
I'm sorry, just a quick question. The unrestricted fund balance would include reserves?
Yes.
And then what other sources?
So most of your general fund is usually unrestricted. Often, it is, I'm not going to say always, but most of the resources in the general fund are usually unrestricted because it's property taxes, it's sales tax revenues that normally have no legal restrictions attached to them. Most of your other restricted revenue sources are accounted for in other funds, what we call special revenue funds, like grants and gas tax and those types of revenues. So it's safe to assume that the vast majority of your general fund, fund balance, is unrestricted. However, obviously, the council may have already designated and reserved a lot of that for other purposes.
Okay. One more question. When you say 10 months, is that sort of averaged over the year? Because I know that there are, you know, the property tax cash flows bring a lot of income in February, November, and then there's high expenditures in July. So I imagine that the 10-month is a variable number, but you're just averaging over the year?
Yeah. Well, really, this is not a very detailed analysis of your cash flow. This is just strictly taking the fund balance, dividing it by your annual expenditures to see what is, on average, how many months you have. But of course, fluctuation when revenue is collected would have to be considered, of course.
I just want, this is like the most encouraging slide in the deck, as far as I'm concerned, because it shows that we're liquid and we can continue to pay our bills for the foreseeable future, and we're on a good track. So I'm very grateful for our city management and staff to create this opportunity for us.
Sure. I mean, obviously, that does measure the city's liquidity. The one thing that it does not reflect are the future obligations, pension and so on, that will, may need to be paid out of those fund balances as well. If we focus on pension, this is how much were the city's contributions to CALPERS over the last three years. And if we were to just focus on what is your unfunded liability? Your unfunded liability is that middle number, the 15.7 million. The purpose of this slide is really to highlight to you that this number is an estimated number, and one of the most significant assumptions in coming up with that estimate is the discount rate. So I wanted to show you how sensitive this estimate to the discount rate. If this discount rate goes up by 1% or down by 1%, your unfunded liability will significantly change. So just to give you an idea, if it goes up by 1%, your unfunded liability goes from 15.7 to 8.8 million. If it goes down by 1%, it goes up from 15.7 to 24.1 million. So it just shows you the significance. And of course, as you probably heard before, it is a very unlikely scenario that the discount rate will be going up. Most likely, it will be going down, not up.
Sorry, one more question. Is the unfunded liability for all six of our pension plans, or just the two first-tier and miscellaneous?
That is for all, so CALPERS consider all of those to just really be one plan. They have what they call rate plans within that plan, so your different tiers, your PAPRA, all of that will be PAPRA, all of that will be all into that one pool that CALPERS have.
Thank you.
So yes, that would include all six tiers. The city also offered retiree medical benefits, what we refer to as OPEB, and it is accounted for very similarly to pension. So just wanted to show you what was the city's contribution over the last three years to the plan. And then on slide number 21, what is the unfunded liability? And again, discount rate is a significant assumption in calculating that number, so I wanted to show you what your liability would look like if that discount rate goes up or down by 1%. With OPEB, there is also another significant assumption, which is the healthcare trends, how much would premiums cost in the future? So again, this is to show you what your liability would look like if that assumption is increased or decreased by 1%. Your number is always the one in the middle, that's your unfunded liability number. The last part of my presentation are the required communications as your independent auditor. So on this slide are the different responsibilities of us as your firm, your independent audit firm, versus the city. So we're mainly responsible for providing an opinion on the city's financial statements, whether they're fairly stated in all material respects or not. We're responsible for evaluating the city's internal control over financial reporting, including evaluating the tone at the top and making sure that management is sending the right message to the rest of the organization about importance of controls, consequences of committing fraud, addressing audit findings, and so on. We're responsible for ensuring that your financial statements are clear and transparent. We're responsible for also communicating with the governing body, with the city council. Management have a lot of responsibilities in this process, so the fact that you hire our firm to certify the numbers does not relieve management from its responsibility for the completeness and accuracy of those financial statements. Our audit is normally done on a test basis, we have materiality thresholds, so we are never in a position to provide ultimate assurance about those numbers. There is always a reasonable assurance, which is a high degree of assurance. Management is also the one responsible for establishing and maintaining internal controls over financial reporting, establishing controls that will prevent and detect fraud, inform us of all known and suspected fraud, comply with laws and regulations, take corrective action on audit findings. So all of those are part of management's responsibilities. The next slide here talking about our independence, so we obviously have to maintain our independence in this process, and this is solely our responsibility. So we evaluate, excuse me, any additional service that we offer the city to ensure that that service has not impaired our independence. So for example, we assist the city in preparing those financial statements. There is a service that could impair our independence if we don't put precautionary or safeguards in place, that's why we have an independent reviewer that reviews those financials. But we also evaluate any relationships with city staff or city management by anyone in our firm, we make sure that those individuals are not involved in the audit, and so on. So obviously, we have determined that we are independent from the city. We believe that the audit was performed timely, within the timeframe communicated to city management. We also, every year, there are new accounting standards that have to be addressed, so every year we will discuss with management what those standards are and whether they are applicable to the city or not. This year, there were two new accounting standards that were discussed with management, and none of them were applicable to the city. Just wanted to mention to you that some of the numbers in your financial statements are estimated numbers, and that is acceptable as long as there is a reasonable basis behind those numbers. Just wanted to give you some examples of what those numbers are. Obviously, your pension plan and your OPEB plan are the biggest estimates in your financial statements. Just some of the important note disclosures in your financials, I wanted to list them, some of the ones that we believe are significant. We encountered no difficulties during our audit process. We had some adjustments, and management has posted those adjustments. So adjustments normally occur when management provide us their final numbers, and we go through the audit process, and we determine that some of these numbers required corrections. So adjustments are usually to make those corrections, none of our adjustments were material. There were no significant risk or exposure that we're aware of, that the city is exposed to. We normally communicate with legal counsel and make sure that we understand what outstanding litigations are out there. We had no disagreement with management. We had some deficiencies in internal controls that we have communicated to management and included in our audit report as well. So super user rights, this is just something that existed from the past. This is a small operating environment, and unfortunately, you end up with one individual have what we believe will be too many, or too much access. There are mitigating procedures that can be put in place, for example, more review, more involvement from maybe city manager, from others, to ensure that the checks and balances are there. So that is one of our comments. Obviously, we design our audit procedures based on those observations, so that's one of the purpose of why we evaluate the operating environment and the internal controls, is to determine how much work we need, or how much auditing we need to audit in each area. Twin cities children's center fee charge, so again, this is not a new item. It seems like we just found some difficulties in tracing some of the charges to the approved rates, or some charges were not even on the schedule of charges to be charged, and it just seemed like the process needed some streamlining and making sure that charges that are being charged to the customers are what the city approved, and they are documented on a fee schedule. And then finally, capital assets, just, capital assets is maintained by one individual and no review of that worksheet, so it's, again, the checks and balances. So those were the deficiencies that we noted in the internal controls. There is more complete write-up of those deficiencies and management's response to those deficiencies in the single audit report that we provided to management. Then finally, before we issued our financial statements, we obtained what we refer to as representation letters from management, and those are letters, management letting us know that they have disclosed to us unknown facts, that they have recorded all transactions, that they have taken responsibility for the financial statements, and so on. We're not aware that management have engaged any other accounting firms to consult on audit matters. Other than our engagement letter and the representation letters, we had no other communications with management. There were no material uncertainties relating to events and conditions, and we have not become aware of any fraud or illegal acts. This is just a listing of the new accounting standards. As I mentioned, every year, there seems to be new ones, so we will be discussing them with management as we get closer to the implementation date. But just wanted to put them here for your information. And other than that, we're definitely, we were delighted to work with the city of Larkspur this year, and thank you for having me today, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you very much. That was very informative, and I'm just glad to be able to note that during the seven years that I've been on the city council, this is, we've never had an unmodified audit report, so I think we're in pretty good shape. Does anybody on the council have any questions at this point?
Yeah, just a couple of minutes.
Go, go, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, I tried to read the 133-page report, and your presentation's very organized and clear. One general question, so what was most encouraging in your conclusions was, you know, statements fairly present all material aspects, you know, and major funds, we're following accepted standards. When you were talking about the pensions and so forth, part of our budgeting is forecasts, is that part of what you go into, is trying to ascertain the, you know, how realistic and, you know, how grounded in the data the forecasts are, was that part of it?
No.
Okay.
We report on history.
Only history.
We just make sure that what actually happened was properly recorded in accordance with the standards and reflected in the financial statements. The future forecasts, I mean, we only consider them when we have concerns about the city's financial condition and its ability to pay bills in the future, so we ask the city to provide us a plan of how you're going to address those issues in the future. But other than that, we will not be evaluating whether the forecasts are reasonable or not.
Okay, thank you.
And that request to the city, does that focus on the deficiencies in internal control, or are there other issues as well?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
I'm sorry, in terms of what you've requested from the city in response to issues that you may have identified, are they focused on the item that you had on your slide 27, deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting, or is there anything else?
So there are two requests that we, so obviously, those deficiencies, we write them up, we provide them to management.
Right.
We ask management to provide us a response on those, an action plan, how are they going to correct those matters? We also obtained that representation letter from management, and this is management acknowledging to us that they have disclosed to us all known facts and all fraud situation that they are aware of, illegal acts.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. And I don't think we have any of those issues.
No, no, not that much, but we're required to.
I understand that, I just want to make sure that you're comfortable that the back-and-forth with the city in terms of any issues that you may have identified in the course and scope of the audit have been resolved.
Yeah, no, we definitely had no difficulties with communication or getting information from management. I mean, obviously, we do have those observations, we understand that it may not necessarily be the easiest thing to hire three, four additional people to ensure that all duties are segregated, but what we look for are mitigating procedures, mitigating reviews to ensure that the checks and balances are still there.
That's terrific, I mean, that's always been a challenge for us, we're a small city, and we have, you know, we have the resources that we have to deal with some of those issues, so we appreciate your continuing to bring them to our attention. Any other comments from this council?
Yep, answer my question.
Okay, anyone from the public want to make a comment? Seeing none, I think this is, this is just an action where we should accept their report if it's acceptable to the council, correct?
You can take a motion and vote to accept the report.
Okay, can I have a motion for that purpose?
Yeah.
Chair, making a motion to accept the report.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's granted. Thank you very much, it's a very, very helpful report. So that takes us, sorry. That takes us to agenda item 8.2, annual progress report on the Larkspur general plan and housing element, and I'm guessing that's a Neil job.
I'm glad Mr. Toff's coming up here, Neil Toff, you're planning a building director, is going to make the presentation on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Haroff and members of the city council.
Vice mayor, you're getting ahead of yourself.
Oh, excuse me, Vice Mayor Haroff, I'm used to addressing our planning commission, I was getting reoriented here. Okay, welcome to the obligatory annual progress report for the general plan and housing element. This is a report that's required by state law, annual reporting to the office, the state office of planning and research and the Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD. The housing element report on the RENA progress is very important to provide to HCD before April 1st. Failure to report can result in severe penalties and potential litigation. And penalties are in how the HCD identifies the status of your housing element, which can affect certain overriding mandates and possibly affect funding for certain roadway So rather than review all the various projects that were accomplished within the city over the last year, I'm going to focus on two matters, the general plan update and the housing element, and housing, a little bit on housing legislation. Number one, on the general plan update, we have had progress with the CAC until earlier this year. We have been working on the draft circulation element, finalizing that, and the land use element with our consultants. And that needs to go back for final review by the steering committee, and then we'll be ready to release the general plan update. And I'll be sending out meeting dates for the general plan steering committee in the next couple of weeks, and I hope to have this wrapped up by the end of summer, and so we can begin hearings on the general plan update early in the, by late summer or early The circulation element, one thing we're doing right now is preparing VMT policy based on recent data provided by the Transportation Authority of Marin, working to integrate that into our circulation element and the other policies that have remained, I think, the goals and policies that remain important to Larkspur. In regard to housing, this is one of the topics that's been very challenging, has created some of the distraction from our attention to the general plan. There has been a lot of updates to legislation, and as noted, we did, last year, update the accessory dwelling unit legislation to catch up to 2017, 2018 legislation, and as soon as we had done that, shortly thereafter, the legislature put out some new legislation that really upped the game and forced us to really pay attention and update the ADU and JADU regulations once again. And that is providing some payoff in terms of production, and I'll talk about that briefly. In terms of housing, last year, Larkspur did only produce one single-family dwelling unit, and we did have two accessory dwelling units. As noted, reporting to the HCD does require actually a long form and Excel spreadsheet, so it's actually a bit, even though that's not a large number, it's a complex reporting because we have to report planning applications in process and building permits in process. So there's tracking that needs to be done constantly. And as of this year, we've already permitted one accessory dwelling unit, so with the new regulations, the more streamlined and I would say more permissive regulations, we're looking at a lot of interest, and we're working with several property owners on permits, building permits for those accessory dwelling units as well. So we do anticipate a large spike in that type of housing, which does provide a mix of low, very low and moderate income affordability. Other housing progress is in October, and this really is sort of leaning towards where we're going. In October, the council had authorized a grant for the staff to apply for a grant from the state. As part of the state legislation, they've been implementing many mandates for the cities, but they've also been creating funding sources, and one of the most immediate funding sources under SB 2 are, is the planning grant program. And we have now applied for a planning grant specifically to collaborate with county and other jurisdictions on ways to promote affordable housing. And we will be using this funding provided by the state to study, to do three, largely three projects, study and update inclusionary housing requirements, and consider residential and commercial linkage fees for housing development. So right now, we do have an inclusionary housing requirement, but it has not been visited in many years, so it'll be valuable to update that and potentially include some linkage fees for new housing production and/or commercial activities. We're also working with the county and other jurisdictions to develop a countywide housing workbook and guide and a singular website resource. And with that, with those monies, we'll also be studying the affordability level for ADUs and JADUs and how these can continue to be applied for housing purposes and affordability housing. and how these can continue to be applied for housing purposes and affordability housing for the next RENA cycles. And another major project we're just undertaking is the objective design and development standards. We've been working, the county has been taking lead on that, and we're doing this to prepare for buyright housing requirements for multifamily housing and mixed-use housing that are becoming a possibility under state legislation and prudentially required for certain sites under the next housing element. The county, again, is leading on that effort with a consulting team, Opticos, and they'll be developing a toolkit for place types, architectural styles and standards, which then each community will refine and develop for use as an as-needed basis. This is essentially trying to develop a stopgap where cities can sort of pre-plan housing design. Community meetings have been announced for this. Next week, on March 11th, there will be a meeting in San Anselmo. On the 19th, Thursday, the 19th, there'll be a meeting in Corte Madera. I'll be putting some particular outreach to the community for that meeting. This initial meeting is really to introduce the purpose and goals of the process. And additionally, it will be putting out a survey for community members to help inform this process. So with that, I would conclude the report, ask for any questions, and recommend that the city council approve the housing element report so we can move this on to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Do you have any questions of staff?
Anyone on the council have a question for staff? Go ahead, Councilmember Hillmer.
Table A. The annual building activity report summary for new construction. Is this a table that we've used in this form in the past?
You mean this, the table at the back of the report?
Uh huh.
This table?
Yes, I find it very helpful.
Yes, yeah.
But I am uniquely interested in how this particular table reads because have we ever had something that only had ones? In the past?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you mean table A, sorry.
The annual element progress report.
So table A, table A2 or A3 or table?
Well, it just says table A here, it's.
I think the answer's been quite a while since we've only had one, one unit.
Yes, essentially, that's reflecting that we did, we did one unit that was a market rate, single-family dwelling, and one unit that was a very low-income second unit, and one unit that was a low-income second unit.
And that's not?
So they're broken down by affordability levels.
It's not, that's not unusually low?
Actually, not, it's the lowest we've had in this cycle, but not by far. We've had, I think, four or five, like, three or four market units. And usually, we've had one to two accessory dwelling units a year.
Thank you, I'll be interested to hear what they have to say.
Yeah, that's going to be a challenge, but I'm not surprised at the numbers.
No, some, and I would say it's a little, it's a little slow. And again, some, what we really rely on are the occasional, you know, larger projects.
Yeah, so Neil, thank you, thank you for the presentation. Kind of tagging on to what Councilman Hillmer was saying, on table B, that's the one I studied the most. And if you can just, you know, two-part question, first, verify my assumptions. So what I'm reading in table B is that the regional housing needs assessment. RENA is saying that Larkspur in 10 years needs to add 132 units. And it's broken down where roughly a third of those are very low-income, some are low, 20, and then above moderate. My read is in 2014, we had a gangbuster year because we did Rose Lane, and we added 96 units. And we actually are over-allocated in the above-moderate category. But then all the following years, we had what we saw, one, one and one. So my first question is, didn't the King project count towards this? I think we did something in 2018 here. The 12 unhoused seniors, King Street senior housing, does that, does that go to RENA at all? Because that's, I don't see anything in 2018 reflecting that.
Unfortunately, that does not reflect as units because those were common rooms within a single.
Okay.
Yeah, they were not even apartments, sort of a shared dorm-style development. And that was part of their ability to redevelop that site for homeless senior housing.
Okay, so 2018, we had four units, we didn't count those. So the assumption's correct that we have 132. So the other question is, in the above?
I've had, and just so you know, I've had discussions with HCD staff on that.
On that King project, yeah, yeah. And so above moderate, we have an excess of 40 units. That doesn't help us with the very low-low income, right? They still want to see that number, so.
That's correct.
We're doing great as far as Rose Lane-type housing and even the senior, but we, I mean, I'm just thinking that the outcome here is we need 35 very low-income projects according to this recommendation in the next three years. So 10 a year is what they're looking from us, is that's correct? Okay.
I would only say I wouldn't use the word recommendation. You know, these are compliance numbers generated by a formula and not necessarily reflective of any mixture of quantitative and qualitative analysis. So, just a word of caution because this is actually a mandate that we're supposed to plan for these units, more than a recommendation.
Okay, so I didn't use a strong enough word, is your point? Okay.
Well, I think to give that some additional framework is in 2012, when they released, and 13, when they released this initial RENA, the process was such that you had to plan for it and try to accommodate it to happen. And your housing element should, would demonstrate your planning for it and creating the ability for it to happen. The, it's only in the last few years, last two years, that the legislature has sort of changed that requirement to be more performance-based. And that is, if it's not happening, you may be subject to some more stringent overriding mandates in the future or your, or your housing, if your housing, your next housing element may be more challenging.
Okay, and last question is, is the 35 very low that we need to, you know, we were meant to have 40 10 years ago. We've reached five. What is our most likely scenario for building or providing those 35 very low-income units?
Well, I think there's, I think it's going to be unlikely we can meet that in total. And we'll have to see how the new ADU laws show, but that would be because we can only count a portion of our ADUs towards very low income. And we're still, it's still not entirely clear. I think a JADU would still fall within that range. It's going to be challenging to necessarily meet that through the accessory unit program. So it would be incumbent upon other potential partners or nonprofit development.
I just wanted to make sure for the benefit of the public, who doesn't have all the background we do. When Mr. Toff says it'll be challenging for us to meet that, what he means is the collective community of government and developers may collectively have a challenge in seeing 35 low-income, very low-income units materialize. Larkspur's planned for them, but we can't make developers build them. And so what we can only hope at this point is that the sites in our general plan that are either not developed or underdeveloped, in combination with increased production of accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units, will produce this number over the period.
Thank you very much.
Scott?
Yeah, I have a question. The general plan that's being drawn up, are you leaving flexibility for things like the library project, which may need some changes in the general plan when we decide exactly how we're going to use it?
The current general plan that we're bringing forward does not change the clasp and the central Larkspur plan and its goals and policies. So if there is a change to the desired use of that site, that would have to go through a gen, towards something that is outside of the clasp current goals, that would have to go through a general plan and potentially a clasp amendment. So we're not doing it within the current general plan.
And?
Update.
We would change the plan after we took action on the property.
One more, just follow-up on that. At what point does that general plan come to the council for input for, in case there are things on there that we want to change one way or another?
Well, our current, our current plan is to finalize the draft. We've been updating a draft that was recommended by, originally by the citizens advisory committee and updating it for current regulations and standards. And we want to, because essentially, it's been, the direction was to update the current general plan and not with significant direction to change land use or density requirements. And there hasn't been a direction to do that. We'll be, bring it to the city council after the draft has been prepared, finished by the steering committee. And we can then, we'll bring it to the city council for approval as the draft and go forward for hearings then.
Perfect, thank you.
And just a footnote to that, there has been council input and involvement through the steering committee as the general plan elements have been put together over an extended period of time. Both the city council representatives, including myself, and representatives from the planning commission. So there's a lot of involvement and support, I think, we've provided to you in getting this done. And, you know, when it is all done, we'll come back and we'll have the process that we need to have in order to review and approve it. But we really appreciate, this is a long, long slog. And, you know, the efforts of you and city staff and moving forward with the general plan update is very much appreciated.
And I think to kind of add on to that, there is urgency to get the general plan updated because when we do that, the next step will be to turn around and begin preparing for the next housing element. We're going to have a cycle coming up that's going to have a challenging RENA and some challenging policy requirements. And after the update of the housing element, that may include some updates to the general plan to, you know, accommodate sites or needs under the housing element. But that's, that will be the next exercise.
Councilmember Hillmer?
Just a suggestion for any council members that might want to understand where entitled units have been located but not yet built? For example, those units like within the clasp, those units on other larger parcels? It might be helpful if you got an update within this plan, general plan information is, just see the range of unbuilt but entitled units. That might give you an overall feel for the range of the challenge.
And I might use the word anticipated or planned units.
Yeah. Are we encouraged?
Yeah, encouraged units.
Well, the housing element is figuring out how to respond to these constant utterances from Sacramento on new housing requirements is a huge challenge. And I hope you're getting the support from the League of California Cities and whoever else is getting them Marin to help us responding to those requirements because it's a mess.
Tomorrow, actually tomorrow, the league is holding a webinar on their planning and I'll be.
Yeah, I noticed that, I may join that.
Would I be correct in just guessing at a number of untitled but unbuilt units in the city to be somewhere in between 200 and 300?
For, for the planned sites?
Yeah.
Yes.
Gives you an idea of what's available.
The Ross, for instance, the Ross Valley sanitary district has not been built out. And that's part of our current housing element.
And there are other opportunity sites as well, and they're, they've been reflected in the plan over time and I'm sure will continue to be so. So we're doing our best, but as the city manager has pointed out, succeeding on these issues requires not only just what we do here at the city, but it also requires, you know, the development community to, you know, participate. And if we don't have that, then we don't have that. So it's a real, it's a real challenge. Any other comments from the city council? Any member of the public want to address this? Please come up to the podium.
Kevin Carroll again from Marin RV Park. Where does the mobile home park fit in in the housing element? Are we classified as low-income or moderate or?
The housing element values, identifies by policy and values the mobile home parks as a form of housing. They're not specifically or officially designated as low, moderate or very low income. So they're not identified as affordable housing per se.
Neil, I think it's important to clarify, that's not a local decision. Neither the federal, neither federal or state government classifies mobile homes as falling into those categories.
So they're not included, they're not separated out in the, in these numbers? Or are they just included in a lump somewhere?
Yeah, no, they're not, but there is policy that does recognize protecting mobile homes, the mobile home parks as a source of housing that is considered, from a local vantage point, considered to be relatively affordable. But they're not, for the purposes of the state, they're not something you can identify or create as, create as housing units, as affordable housing units.
Okay, so if more mobile homes were located in Larkspur's jurisdiction, would that increase the low-income number?
We're not allowed to count them, is what he's trying to tell you.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to clarify in my mind. And even if their owner, if there was a communal ownership of the property as opposed to an outside, in other words, if there was a low-income housing community group that bought the property and made it an owner-operated park, would that change its status?
I don't believe that it would.
No, it wouldn't.
It would.
It would not.
And just, yeah, it is, we're, we're, yeah, we're very supportive of the concepts, but as I think we're trying to emphasize here, we are constrained by state law on what counts for meeting our obligations.
No, that's why I asked.
If we could change it, it would be great, but, you know, we're kind of stuck.
I'm not asking you for change, I just.
Yeah, no, I understand you're looking for a clarification.
I had to fit it in, so I, I understand.
But, you know, it is part of our policy to encourage that, that type of housing within our community. And we do, we just don't get credit for it, that's the problem.
Well, no, because my thinking was, there's a number of units within the city, over almost 200 units, that are currently classified RV, quote, you know, transient housing. And if that was converted to mobile home, would it improve the numbers? That was the, well, yeah, that's why I was asking, you know, to clarify, thank you.
From the public, please come up to the podium.
Joan Duckowski.
Yes, thanks, Joan.
Also from Marin Park. Just tagging on, one of the things that we've been talking about, so this is my question, is we've been talking about the homes themselves, mobile homes. But if the people who live there have already jumped through some of the financial scrutiny and hoops of PG and A care programs, Medicaid, social security, food stamps, is there any way to help the? A care programs, Medicaid, Social Security, food stamps, is there any way to help the city out in having this count? Because those people have already been recognized by the owners as, as being in that category. So just a thought.
I encourage you to contact your local legislators in Sacramento.
Oh, we've done that, thank you.
Let me ask, just for clarification, what is the definition? Does it have to be a fixed structure? What is the reason or the, why mobile homes are not counted?
I don't, I don't know the total answer to your question. The state law treats mobile home parks as their own entity and has their own section of state law over them. I'm only going to speculate. The state planning concept is that a mobile home park is effectively one commercial property that's been licensed to rent spaces so that folks can park a mobile home on top of those spaces. And I think probably if we went way back in time, that just wasn't viewed as the type of housing that either had federally or HCD in the state was pursuing with their policies.
Has there been anything about conversion of a mobile home park into something more permanent that would qualify? I mean, if you have a home that starts as a mobile home and it becomes a permanent, you know, structure?
So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
It's not unheard of for parks to become cooperatively owned by their residents and effectively then operate much the way a condominium complex would operate, but still, under that scenario, the state is going to consider it a mobile home park, under mobile home park law, and not part of our, part of this matrix that we're trying to fulfill.
Just maybe for clarification, so the regional housing needs assessment, RENA, looks specifically at deeds, correct? So if you have a tendency in common, if you have, like, King Street, if you have a mobile home park, you don't have deeded property, and arena number needs a deed. Isn't that the basis of this?
I'm not sure that's exactly the criteria, because what they're really looking at is dwelling units, fixed dwelling units, and a unit comprised of bathing, eating, and living facilities.
Like the JADU would be...
I think the reason that you see a lot of focus on deeds in the regional housing needs assessment arena is because there's two forms of properties being counted under there, a deed-restricted or not-restricted property. And that has to do with the permanency of the type of housing. A deed restriction is often seen as a way to better protect against losing that form of housing down the road.
Yeah. Any other comments from the public? If not, we'll bring it back to the council. Do we have, is this isn't an action item, or is it?
There isn't. I wondered, I was reflecting on Councilmember Candel's question earlier about the library parcel. We obviously had two speakers earlier on concerned about the RFQ process, so I thought I'd only elaborate that there's the general plan, and then throughout the city, there's a number of areas subject to specific plans and master plans. And those are first, the documents that have to be visited, I think, before you would visit the general plan for any change, and those have their own process and procedure.
Yeah, in the context of this discussion, I think that's, that's right, because they are, they are separate. When we talk about the general plan, we're talking about a general plan.
I wouldn't want anyone to think the general plan might be used as a way to co-opt a public process to revisit any of those other documents.
Absolutely not. Seeing nothing more from the public, anything else from council members? So do we need to do anything here, or just, we just heard it?
I will move the staff recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's adopted. And I think that brings us to our last agenda item, which is adjournment.
I think we have one more.
Oh, we have one more?
One more. I'll be very brief.
Oh, I'm sorry, 8.3, I apologize for that. Yeah, please, please give us your report on that.
The vice mayor runs a brisk meeting.
I do, I do, don't I?
It's the practice of the council to, rather than just have minutes which don't always reflect or capture the spirit of your strategic planning session, to actually have an agenda item where I report out what occurred.
I apologize for skipping over.
That's okay. The council met this year on February 1st to conduct its annual session. This year, there was a lot more focus on your protocols, your operating procedures, and how the council does its business. That took up a big part of the day. However, we did have a discussion of the city's financial picture, and three exercises were requested by the council for staff to work on and bring back. Two are what I would call study papers or white papers that we'll probably bring back to you in the form of work sessions, just for discussion. One is what it means for a general law city to become a charter city. That's a trend we're seeing around the state, so we're going to look at why that's happening and report back to you. We are a general law city. A charter city is one that has effectively its own constitution, and there's slight differences in state rules about the two forms. Secondly, state law now allows a council to consider classifying its storm drain system as a utility. Staff's going to review that new law and report back to the council on the pros and cons of that concept. And then it was just suggested that this year, one exercise that might be good is to take a look at our business license fees and whether they should be modified in any way, so we'll take, we'll do a review of that as well.
Okay, thank you, and again, apologize for moving too quickly. Particularly, the charter city issue is one that I think has caught my attention and something we're going to look forward to seeing how we can think about that issue a little bit more within the city. Any comments from city council members? Anyone from the public would like to reflect on the report? If not, motion to accept the report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we accept the summary. That's great, and we appreciate that. So now, we will move on to agenda item number nine, which is adjournment. And unless there are any other matters that the council would like to bring up at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn?
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Oops, wait a minute, got to get the right thing here.